Yeah, anytime you are.
We're rolling.
Be in seven o'clock, I'd like to call the Rondo Planning Board to order. It's a regular meeting, March 28th, Meliard L.A. School Library. I'd like to start with the call to order or roll call, Ken.
Greg Coakley.
Tom DeKinder.
John DeKindrum.
Bob Coon.
Robbie Moore.
Rich Kamal.
Tad Redway, Planner.
Ann Burgess, Sports Secretary.
Today, we're going to, one, look at the minutes of March 14th. Two, conduct land use ordinance revision workshop. Two items under that signage landscaping and lighting together. Big item three, discuss hopefully in a little bit of detail an implementation strategy, discussion of ordinance approval schedules. And proposed interfaces with both the Comprehensive Plan Committee and the Economic Development Committee. Four, planners report. Five, other business from the public and or the board. And six, we'll end, leaving it open for public comment. Dan being here as part of the public, you pretty well know the process will be pretty open. If there's any kind of our discussion you need to see, give my attention. So item number one, approval of minutes. March 14th. I have a motion to approve the minutes of March 14th. I have a second by Rich. Any other discussion by members of the board? Bearing none, all in favor. One extension, because he wasn't present. Like to move on to item number two, land use ordinance revisions. Downtown Business District One, signage, DB1 district. Tad has provided us with some of the definitions and stuff that we had asked for. And I understand that you have a few decision points you want us to work through.
Right, okay. In your package you'll note that you have actually three separate, well, you have four documents. One is the revisions to the DB1 sign ordinance, which is basically the revisions that you folks made at your last meeting. Those have been implemented there. The second thing you'll note also, you're identified by the end of it. The second thing that you'll note is that we have a list of definitions that pertain to signage in general and DB1 in particular in some cases. We had asked at the last meeting for some definitions of some of the various kinds of light and signs to get an idea of how, what types of lighting that you wanted in the DB1. You had several decision points to make. One was window signage, kind of lighting and window signage. You remember we went around and around and around quite a bit on that. The other was the whole issue of LED signs were lit, moving signs. Signs that's animated or can be digitally changed. So do you have some definitions there for you to chew on? Then the third thing that you also have is you also have the updated 5.7 performance standards for signs. Now, you recall that the whole concept of the new ordinance format is that that what we're putting in every single individual zoning district will be signage requirements that are germane particularly to that zoning ordinance or that zoning district. So what we have is standards for the DB1, for instance, will be in the DB1 section. Standards that are particular to the BI district will be in the BI section. And then we have the general standards for signage throughout the town. The general standards that pertain to design, to prohibited and permitted signage and non-conformant, et cetera. That's all going to be in the performance section of the zoning ordinance. So as such, again, just to remind you, the objective that we had from the very beginning is that if you are doing a project in the DB1 district, for instance, that when you pull out that section on DB1 in the zoning laws, everything that you need that's very specific to the DB1 until you do your development will be in one place. And we are going to try to avoid the back and forth, the ping pong effect that we currently have with the current ordinance. We have to look in multiple sections of the ordinance to find the information that you need. So as we do this, you always have to remember that we have the base section, which is 5.7, which is the basic performance standards for signs in the town. And then signage requirements that are specific to individual districts will be in the district regulations. So you have the 5.7 as your reference. And I don't think we've done an update of 5.7. And so I made some changes and modified it and updated it so that we would have as a reference as we go through this signage in this district and the DB2 and the BI and all the other districts. The final document that you have is also the, just a change to item number 10 in the standards in 5.7. And that's regarding signs on automobiles, unregistered on holdings. That was last meeting, I did that tonight. I'm sorry, I thought you should have it. So in any case, we need to move right now to looking over the changes that you made in the 725, specifically signs, I only gave you the section on signs. I think I've got everything in there that you had asked for, all the changes. I think the only change that I did make. Where do you get some stuff here?
Marty King has arrived. Have you given an enter and intended discussion, Marty? Thank you. I'm actually, yeah. Thank you, Marty.
There were several, little changes. I had made a change on page, on the 725D, which was referring to no flashing or rotating. I put signs in there because it was originally no flashing or rotating reader boards or string lighting. So it wasn't just flashing and rotating reader boards, it was signs as well. So that was the original language that was in there, was no rotating reader boards. No rotating or flashing signs. And we had LED reader boards, you can recall. So it's just to make it more clear, then.
While we're on that, just a question, Tad. Is that on the definitions of signage, is that electronic variable message sign? Is that a proper technical term that's in use?
Yes.
Because we might consider putting that in instead of reader board if that's the official term.
Yes, that is a, that is an official term that, I pulled that down in the sign manufacturer's website on the definition of electronic. I mean, that comes directly from there.
So we have to alter that item anyway if you want to put that in?
Exactly. And that's where the definition is very helpful, that if we have those definitions, we can plug them in in the various plans where we want to, which is the whole purpose of having this stuff.
I think there's two things, if you have message boards that you control at the sign. The electronic variable, you do it from a remote location. We do our hospital sign from community relation. So I think that's the electronic variable, it's remote is what.
Yes, it does say remote in the definition. Not all, not all those.
Reader boards are. Sometimes you have to add them right in.
EVMs? Yeah. Some you do manually. Yeah, you do it manually, actually you can do it from a keypad.
Wow. I guess that's remote, though.
It was remote, actually, you know, and I used to have to do it.
I don't, I don't know that that's irrelevant, that it has to. Yeah, whatever, turn over and out. I don't know how that impacts it one way or another.
The display is still the same. It's an electronic variable reader board. Which means that you change it, it's changeable. It's a precursor to LEDs, it's really what it sounds like. And LEDs originally were electronic variable readers. So that might be a place to put that, John, you're absolutely correct. You'll notice that we did put in that session that John has written up on. Multiple faced signs, that's in there. But things that we have yet to finish on this, and we're so close. I think one of them was the issue that we'd spent a lot of time on, and that's lighting in windows, window signage lighting.
Can I ask about that, EVM? The way I read it, every LED would be an EVM because they are electronically, they can change quickly.
Yeah, the difference between the two really, I mean technically you could say they're both the same. Or let's put it, LED is an EVM. But an LED also now is applied to a sign that has a higher level of technical capability. The LED as it's applied now in the signage world really refers to the very high quality images that are now produced on billboard sized signage. They move, you get, that's where you see in the LED definition, it refers to video quality imaging. And that's dramatically different than the EVMs, which are basically the blocky kind of letters that we're all used to. So we're kind of making a distinction, the signage industry makes a distinction between LED and EVMs. And because of that, since we're trying to be consistent with what the sign industry recognizes as definitions, that's why I put it in there as two separate things. In any case, we may have to put them side by side, EVM and LED next to each other.
Question. Should you say LED programmable or LED by itself? Because if it's programmable, then it will change. Okay. If it's non-programmable LED, it's, it's not moving or anything else.
Yep. I think an EVM is more in the area that you're talking about. I mean, EVM can be static. An LED can be static, doesn't have to necessarily move. Well, it has the capability, but they're all programmable. I mean, what we wanted to do is make a distinction between an LED sign, an EVM sign, and an LED light. Because the issue that we had a concern about last time was LED like neon is a form of light. You'll notice the neon definitions are in there too. A neon is a form of light. An LED is a form of light. A neon sign, which we now have a definition in there, has a definition of being a sign that's composed of bended tubes, inert gas that produces, that is lit, but it is a sign that's produced by this bending.
Conduit.
Conduit tubing. And they like to use the word tubing for some reason. I would agree conduit's a good one. But it's this conduit and it forms a sign, artful or what I think they use the term artful sign. Same thing with the LED sign. LED is a form of white. LED sign is a sign that's composed of many of these tiny lights that, you know, produces an image essentially. So that's why we're making that distinction out between an LED sign and an LED light. So we won't get that confusion that we ran into last time about neon and LED and, you know, prohibited, they'll be prohibiting LED lights from being used. When LED lights are going to be the new wave of lighting in just about every facet of illumination we're encountering in the future.
Give that one to signage?
Yeah, window signage. So you've got, I think if I could recap, and I'm sure the board could correct me on this. If I could recap, the issue was that we went back and forth on what level of light do you want signage in the window to achieve? I mean, and if it's, and we're assuming that it's signage that's either static signage that is not illuminated. It went everything from painted signs on the window, let's say a typical painted window that has the sign painted on the window or decal on the window. Painted is better because you can get some backlighting on it. Using ambient light to illuminate that. Using an exterior spotlight to illuminate that. Whether it be an exterior or downlight to illuminate that. Or the next level was to actually have the sun itself illuminated. So the issue was a EVM sign or an LED sign. Whether that you could put an LED sign in the window or you could put an ambient sign in the window. So we went all the way from painted signs or, you know, placard signs that are lit by backlighting, because usually people use security lighting in their buildings, to all the way to allowing LED signs in the windows. And that's the decision point that you guys got hung up on last time. With all the possibilities of window lighting, that's what we got hung up on. And so the issue, actually Greg had asked that issue that I provide these definitions to give us a clearer idea of the ranges of choices that we have and how we should, how we should proceed. It's really, frankly speaking, gentlemen, it's an aesthetic issue.
If I, if I follow, then our first portions here, maximum area ground and maximum area second story, this 30%, 25%. Are those referring to just the painted sign?
Yes, referring to all.
Well, because not, illumination added kind of infers that it became a, or was it? No?
No. I would disagree. I mean, the sign can be one of two things. Illumination, see originally the illumination was put in there, I think Greg had asked. Again, it was Greg who asked for illumination to be put in there. Illumination was the idea of illuminating a sign that wasn't lit by itself. Because if you have a sign that's permitted to be an illuminated sign, it does need to be illuminated. The nature of the sign is illuminated. Does that make sense? An LED sign is a sign that by its very nature is automatically illuminated. An EVM is automatically illuminated. You don't need additional illumination of light on the sign. Because the nature of the sign is, that is an illuminated sign.
That's your point, yeah.
Versus, versus a lighting, illumination, which Greg was talking about, backlighting, front lighting, down lighting. So one, the sign is, has no, it has no lighting of its own. Or it has its own lighting. And that's really the issue that you have to decide. Which sign is appropriate in this district? What signs would be appropriate for windows in this particular district?
The board has already said, we're not going to regulate any of the ambient lighting that happens to be on the inside. Right? So there's still an opportunity to light up those windows, correct?
Yeah, let me throw this out as a starting point. That we put in three criteria for either single or multiple occupancy. And those criteria would be that, under elimination now, that it be static, that means non-moving. That it be constant in intensity, meaning non-flashing and that kind of thing. And that it be during business hours only. Because that was one of the suggestions, and I thought it was a pretty good one last time. So whether it's backlit, internally lit, whatever, wouldn't matter in this case. It's just that it can't be a moving sign, it can't be a flashing sign or varying in intensity, and it can only be used during business hours.
I would, I agree with you about only during business hours. But I don't agree with you about the rest of it. I think as long, you turn the lights off when you leave, cool. If you're open during the day, I have no problem if your neon sign flashes and says that you're open. It's during normal business hours. It's after hours that I don't want the signs out there. You get, you'll get plenty of light from the, from the attached signage, from the illumination that is allowed on the exterior side of the building to indicate that you have an office there or you have a business there. I think that's going to be sufficient.
How is it that you're disagreeing with me on that?
I don't care if it's a flashing light or a rotating sign. I agree with you that it should not be after hours.
The discussion from last week, and I'm sure that reflects all the, or two weeks ago, was that that couldn't be enforced, there was nobody to enforce the after-business stuff, right?
And honestly, I do not understand that. Because if you have a sign on in the window and it's not allowed, it's pretty obvious. I don't expect the codes enforcement officer to drive through the district looking for them. But if somebody happens to be going through and see it, or if he happens to go through and see that the lights are on and they're not supposed to, it's a pretty clear violation.
Yeah, just make one point on the statement that certain things would be unenforceable. I think that orders on an official maintenance decision of what is going to enforce and what not to. And we shouldn't make our judgments based on what somebody is saying they're not going to do.
I'm just going by that full discussion that was held, get it off. I agree with you.
A question for you, quick. Why would it bother you if the lights are flashing all night versus flashing until midnight clock?
I think they should be open, I think if they're flashing, they should be flashing to indicate that the business is open. Not that the business is there, but that the business is open. Otherwise, you could end up with all kinds of businesses all night long with flashing signs in their windows. I think it defeats the purpose of what we're looking at to create in the downtown section.
Nobody's going to be downtown at after-hours anyways.
But depending on the kind of business that it is. Yeah.
Find the store and see my Powerball number, that's one more.
Doesn't make like financial sense. You have to pay for the light all night, and you're looking at it 3:00 in the morning, but.
Well, we're going to have to change 5.7. I'm kind of devolving from where we are right now because we don't even allow that kind of flashing or rotating signs as it is right now.
Yeah.
I think, the reason why I ask, I think flashing light could be distracting or annoying, take away from the image we want, whether it's business hours or after-business hours. Flashing light, if there were a dozen of them all in one strip.
I remember we're also talking about window signs specifically.
Yeah, right.
Right, but that can be just as annoying.
You're right, it could be.
Something else.
John, read yours again, the three conditions.
I had three criteria, and that would apply both under single and multiple occupancy. That it be static.
Everybody in agreement that should be in place?
Static. That it be constant intensity.
But that means no flash, that's weird.
No flashing or no, you know, bright, dim and that kind of thing. And then the third one, during business hours only.
Now, question. Even though I wasn't here last week, I had school or whatever. Now, you're telling me that example on the market as things were out of all, whatever else, they're not flashing, but they're stimulating the amount that the drawing is going to be. Even after closing hours, they have to turn them off?
This is only window sign.
This is on a window.
It is on a window?
Yeah, it's the front entrance. It's the front entrance.
Yeah, and it's a lit sign?
It's, yeah.
Yeah, so that would be, if the third criteria during business hours only is supported by the board, that would mean that they would have to turn it off when the store is not open.
I mean, it's not flashing, it's not anything else, it's just an information, I'm sorry.
It's an EVM type sign.
In there it's probably more of, that's a good example, though.
Well, I, you know, we could, if you don't think it's.
I'm not trying to.
It's an excellent point. It's an excellent point.
If the board feels that business hours doesn't matter, that it should be up to the business itself, I wouldn't have any problem, I just wanted to get the discussion going.
We've got general agreement on the first two criteria. Is that sign variable in intensity? No.
Scroll up.
Yeah, it's a moving sign.
I think that's inside, isn't it?
It's inside.
Yeah, no, what I'm saying is, I don't think it turns, it moves Powerball a long way, just, I think it's, or maybe I'm not with it.
It's scroll.
The store.
Yeah, it's an LED type, I think it's LED, but it's a scroll, you know. Sometimes you'll, they have different format, but you'll see POWER or sometimes it'll just flash up Powerball. And, you know, it's different. I don't remember what that one does.
I was thinking of that one, that may be inside the store, which is not facing to the road. I'm talking about the one that faces the road, and it just has the numbers, whatever the jackpot is. That's all I'm saying is.
But even still though, Marty, even that though, you know, you could still have a convenience store that has the scrolling key one or whatever. Yeah, I don't remember the one you're talking about, I don't remember exactly what that one does.
One, no after-business?
No after-business.
No after-business, general consensus?
I'm Marty.
I'm already thinking more of the order. After-business, I mean, that's information.
I'm in favor of after-business.
Closing and after.
No.
Having it on.
A lot of that after-business.
So we've got a huge majority today. If, I mean, it would appear then without, without that third criteria.
I don't know if it was huge, but it was pretty close.
I think it was two and, one, two, three, four.
Are you including the flashing lights in after-business hours?
No, no, if it's, they just have.
Stationary.
Stationary sign. Yeah, neon light on all night long.
It's like having a beer.
I don't mind that scroll and light that Dan's talking about.
Usually those are real low intensity anywhere, the light.
They are. Those are the ones that I'm kidding about when I'm stopped at a light, I want to read my number.
The thing that I've noticed, when you go by, when you go by almost every convenience store and every, everybody has LEDs. I mean, all of your numbers, what you're paying for gas, they're all in these signs. Now, they're not flashing. They're just, they're stationary. They're just like. That's huge.
If it's static, I don't have a problem with it. I just thought that we were keeping flashing on there because after-business hours, a flashing light could be destructive.
But you can look at the intensity, right? That's a very low intensity. Right, it's not like a neon sign flashing, that's a very low intensity and you almost can't see it until you're this close to it.
Or unless you're looking for it.
Right? So I mean, I think that's.
It depends on what you dial up the watch to, that's really.
Yeah, but the types of signs that Marty's talking about, those aren't.
But the question I have to ask you, gentlemen, is, you're not specifying those signs. You're saying window sign, 30% of window. And that could all be, you know, an EVM light. So that's a hell of a lot of light coming out of there. Imagine a window that's a 10 foot by 5 foot window, 50 square feet. And right now, we're saying that you have, you have, you can take, you can have 30% of that window covered with signage. And imagine if it's all an EVM or an LED sign. Boom. Is that the image we're looking for? Is that, is that the image you're looking for? I think, I wonder if you're really looking more for a reader board sign in the window. I wonder if that's what you're really looking for, instead of a sign that's in the window that is, that, let's say, a Rondo Market is in the window in an EVM or an LED sign. That their sign in the window is actually an LED sign. Is that what you're looking for? Because if you are, fine, but if you're not, recognize that the way we're doing this right now, that's what, that somebody could do that very easy.
Well, here's a question. If it's hanging, well, we'll call Guinness or whatever, it's sitting on the window, it's hanging down, it's a lit sign, it's not moving or anything else, it's a product being sold. And it's, and that has to be turned off too at night?
You're not answering my question. My question was, 30% of that sign, that window, could be, you know, 15 square feet. Think of it as 15 square feet of that sign could in fact be an LED sign.
One, Marty, to answer your question, that's the discussion. Nothing is being prohibited right now, we're trying to determine what is appropriate and what isn't. So those sorts of things, I think there's general agreement that wouldn't be too, that wouldn't be too bad. bad. Pat's giving me an example though, in the wording that says, that might not be too bad, but you open it up for the elephant, which might be.
Which, which might make it very hard from an enforcement point of view. I mean, that's why, two weeks ago, I favored not having any illumination at all on the window signs. I don't, I don't think, say none, is that big of a problem. You're gonna have exterior lighting on the building anyway. It's gonna illuminate stuff. If you, if you're open for business, your interior ambient lighting is going to show up with this, for the signs. I just don't see any reason why we actually need to light the signs that are in the windows.
Because you're not right up against the street. I mean, I can't turn and see something this small, okay? Unless I'm up to it, okay? But if you're driving by or something other, you see it, like Greg said, turn on a stoplight, you wanna read it.
How would you handle a business like Amato's, which is certainly a type of business we would want in there?
At night, turn your lights off.
Look, the other thing to consider in this situation, the maximum square footage of all signs in the aggregate is sixty-five. So if I have a fairly good sign on a building, outside of a whole store-like building, how much sun am I gonna be able to put in my window?
You've got many windows probably.
Yeah, I mean, that's a good point too.
That's an excellent.
But what if you're in multiple occupancy? And you don't have a post sign. You're gonna put your sign all in the window, or you're gonna put it in a signage, right? You're gonna put a wall sign, projecting signage, and/or you're gonna put it in the window. But if you decide, I'm not gonna have a wall sign, I'm not gonna have a projecting sign, I'm gonna have the whole thing in the window.
Twenty-five.
Which I, you know, would be terrific. I mean, you could have this big, huge window, and you'd seen beautiful big window signs before. Question, do you want them LED and EVMs? Because unless you make a distinction there, they could be. And that's fine if that's what you want.
Something that could be so expensive.
It would only require eighty square feet of window space. And you could put in twenty-five square feet of that illuminated window sign.
So maybe it was gonna, one way to resolve this might be just have a maximum amount of lit sign in the window, maybe left on or right, whatever. Maybe maximum of eight square feet or something. I know it's an extra, extra closet put in there, but I think thirty, twenty-five square feet of lit sign is pretty glaring. And it could happen with multiple occupancy.
And I like the idea, frankly speaking, I don't have a problem with signage being on all night. I mean, that's part of advertising is, that's how you know what things are, is sometimes trying to buy a place at night, you see the light. You know, I didn't know they said Guinness there, you know?
And that's good for business.
And that's where the object is.
Cheap advertising.
The object is to make it so it still fits with the scale and the character that you're trying to do. That's all we're trying to do. Still impart enough information, not let it, you know.
Something like, well, I'm thinking Marty used the Janus sign, John, the Amato's, and it, to me, that's, that's everyday, that's not all that out of, out of where, what we're trying to get. Amato's probably, we're used to seeing that Amato's sign. If, they're pretty big.
I'm just saying.
It'll be way bigger than the twenty-five square feet.
Right. That could add up to a lot of square footage, and yet it is objectionable. So just because we have a lot of.
Yeah, I don't find that objectionable. It'd be the blinking, flashing and all that, that would, would be distracting.
And we keep bringing it back, I go, we gotta keep bringing it back when we talk about, you know, our franchise, our franchise situations, which, you know, we will be, hopefully attracting. But don't forget that they do have the flexibility, they change, if they want to come here, they'll, they'll change their signage to meet our standards. I mean, McDonald's and Freeport is still one of the models.
Yeah.
And they still have their reader board. I mean, they still have their, I was just telling Greg tonight, they still have their reader board in Freeport. They put all their signage into the reader board. And then they have that little sign out front. Works.
Does it take more than eight feet of?
No, it's actually four feet by nine.
Oh, we had an M-S. The eight feet didn't seem to fall on too many good ears, like you could tell the twenty-five, yeah, no, I know, the twenty-five feet, I think every twenty-five foot feet.
In company.
Not a square feet, that wasn't, I'm talking about height.
To get an idea of scale, Amato's was four by five, that's twenty square feet.
They had one in every window.
Yeah, yeah. But they wouldn't be able to.
The neon is part of the architectural element.
Yeah.
It's dedication. Well, yeah, it's, it's the art element, yeah. It's, I mean, neon is kind of a retro thing. And it is.
They're, they're using neon for shapes as opposed to the actual name of the business.
Maybe some pizza and. Well, then we got two-thirds of your stuff. Looks like it's okay to continue after-business hours. At some point, we'll have to have a motion, but there's still an issue here on the lighting. And I think it does get back to how much, what is the intensity is dead. And at some point, you probably would get it too much unless you're set further back. See, it's kind of hard not knowing where they're gonna be too. Yeah, if you're, if you're near the road, one thing, if you're set back.
But we're trying, we're trying to encourage people to build up near the road.
To build it, yeah, exactly.
So we're, you know, that's, that's part of our focus. I have to ask, have we, have we reached consensus that we're gonna allow window lighting? Allow those signs to be lit?
Yes.
Okay. Cause I'm opposed to it, but I wanna make sure if we're gonna go down that road.
That's why, that's why the illumination got added.
I did too.
Sorry.
I'm not gonna vote against neon light sometime.
I'm, I have a thing about neon, so I spent too many, too many weekends up in Alex, New York.
See, I think we all like.
And I think they're on water.
Do we, you know, this is one of those issues, do you limit it now or if it becomes an issue?
You're trying to create an image. I mean, what we're trying to do is create an image. We're not trying to create, you know, Doc Square or Kennebunk, because they don't love this stuff.
You'll never get everything now.
The way, the way.
Yeah, right. You do it, you mess it up now, you don't get a chance, you don't get a redo. So we gotta do it right.
Yeah, but you'll never get it all. But say ahead, just, just say, whatever we came up with, wouldn't allow an Amato's in here. They read the thing and say, well, I'm not going. Okay? Period because of that. That would be crazy.
Let me tell you, Bob, honestly, having worked for some of these guys on the other side of the table, they really wanna come, they'll adjust. Rite Aid said, well, no way are we changing our sign. We have our interior lit sign. Bullock had the Rite Aid in Saco. Bullock had the Rite Aid in Old Orchard Beach. They have wooden signs, which they carved wooden signs, which they put lights on. McDonald's did the same thing at Freeport, and they did the same thing at Belfast, I think it was.
I see that.
You know, when they wanna come, they'll come.
Yeah, and that's fine, that's fine when you talk to corporations. Okay. But what about the little guy?
I have to ask, the discussion, if I were a part of this discussion, it would sound to me like you're talking about putting in fast food and convenience stores and bars, because we're gonna hang Guinness signs in, and we're gonna put in Amato's neon signs. Are we not looking at any other kind of business?
A hundred, hopefully.
Well, I would hope so, but the discussion, the discussion about.
But the businesses that put the lights in the window.
The others you won't have to worry about more often than not. I just had to ask, because it seems to be the discussion.
There may be a few fashion lawyers that would do it, but.
So I look at the neon signs, not as Guinness signs. I look at them as Cadillac Jacks or something like that, you know, something distinctive, made for that individual. Now, would a little guy do that? Those are little guys who do that. Usually they try to set themselves out from other people. Reader boards, not as distinctive. You'll find real estate agents wanting to use the reader boards, the EVMs, you know, Houseover, you know, Houseover in Kennebunk, you know, three hundred and fifty thousand waterfront views, you know, that's the stuff they put up. Or Powerballs or things like that, that's, who's gonna put those up? It's gonna be, who's gonna use the LED signs? Somebody probably bigger would be doing the LED signs until, until the price comes down. But I agree with you. I mean, we shouldn't try to cater to the franchises, because the franchises adjust. They wanna be here, they'll.
We do want to attract business. Yep. I understand if they want to come, part of wanting to come with will be kind of the regulation. But I think we're, I think we're almost here actually. I think it's just a matter of either going to the intensity, which I don't know, that we have the technical expertise to get into that. So, I mean, that would be one way to go. Or second is to limit it to twenty-five square feet. It might be too big, or thirty, or twenty, or some number.
But we've already, we've already done that by indicating the total aggregate amount of signage at the twenty-five square feet on a, on a multiple occupancy situation. And if they wanna put it all in the window, we let them put it all in the window. If they don't wanna have anything up on the sides, if they don't wanna have something that sticks off the building that indicates where they are, then let them put it all in the window. Otherwise, we're gonna end up with a fight of saying, well, this guy can have thirty, thirty percent of his windows and this guy can't have because, because he's, he's got something else going on, or he's got nothing going on. I don't wanna put the codes enforcement officer in a position of looking at it and saying, well, you've already got fifteen square feet of signage over here, so you're only allowed to have twenty square feet of signage in your window, even though you can have thirty percent maximum. To me, that, that would create a can of worms, trying to measure the amount of signage in different locations on the, on the business.
Yet we have to do that now.
Yeah, I know. You're gonna manage this. It will, it will be.
That's what I like the planned developments most together. It's more controlled.
Don't be curious.
Yep.
Good point. But I'm not thinking of it from that standpoint.
You did make a motion.
I did not.
I didn't, I didn't think, it wasn't.
I will be happy to make a motion, but we place under the category of illumination in window signage for both single occupancy and multiple occupancy block, two criteria. And those criteria would be that the sign is static and that it is of constant intensity.
Second. Have a motion, have a second. Any other discussion? And that goes to.
Well, given, given that I lost the turn them off at night, I have no further discussion.
Eric, anybody else?
We're not gonna restrict it to size, other than what we've got.
Other than the six-five, let them put them where they, they want. That's my understanding.
Yep.
Okay. All in favor?
Yep.
Okay.
All right.
Anyone opposed?
No one was opposed. You weren't opposed either, were you?
No.
You know.
A little bit different than, right?
Mr. Chairman, I have a question on, just on the dimensional requirements on the post signs for multiple occupancy. It's a maximum number of post signs, there's one. And a second sign may be permitted by the planning board if the lot has more than five hundred feet of frontage, more than one access drive, and the signs maintain a minimum of two hundred foot separation.
I believe we were three hundred.
We were at three hundred.
Wasn't it?
Okay.
They go to four?
In minutes, it's just.
It was three hundred.
Okay.
Yeah, I had three hundred on this, this notepad over here. Apparently I changed it to three hundred.
And catch, right?
Good catch, good catch.
Yeah, and three hundred in the minutes, actually.
Yep. So the minutes, it's on my notes. I just missed it, my apologies.
Not a problem. It's not like that never moved in state.
No, that was excellent.
It's not like that never moved in state in public today.
Off this the time.
Okay, next item.
Next item is gonna be banners, commercial banners, remember? They started going around and around on commercial banners. I've got real bad, you'll remember that Dan DuBois had mentioned from the public that it would probably be a great idea to go look at Naples and talk to folks at Naples, take a look at the regulations on their banners.
True.
Naples has no regulations on banners.
And they came out nice.
Yeah.
Well, no regulation and nice.
What they did was those banners, those banners were bought, those banners were uniformly, those were bought as part of the revitalization effort. And it was, it was uniformly bought by the town, selection of banners, and they, they put them up. It was part of the revitalization effort. So that's where the uniformity and size and color, you know, all came from, was that. But if you look at the zoning ordinance, you're more than welcome to go online and try to find it yourself. Naples has always been famous for having anemic zoning ordinances. And the sign ordinance is very, very, very subjective, but really doesn't address the issue of banners. So I sat down with the code enforcement officer and discussed the issue of banners for him too. And, you know, he had questioned whether, given what we're wanting to do, whether we want those plastic banners that they hand out if you buy fifteen cases of Bud, you know, you get a banner. But if the board is insistent on going that direction, he had recommended, well, all right, I can deal with time limits, and I can deal with the limited number of times they get to put it. And I'll also put them, you know, if you, and he said, but I mean, how am I gonna, I'm gonna have eighty K nightmares going after these guys when they don't take on down their signs after thirty days? And I recommend, well, hell, why don't you have them put an escrow up for it? Get the escrow back at the end of the thirty days. Well, anywhere does that all the time and make sure that we have compliance on road construction, site plan review construction, or anything like that, right? We do it. And I give the code enforcement officer the capability to do that as well. And he said, okay. If you're more compliant, then they're gonna lose money. And so what we're proposing right now would be, as is shown in section five.
Five seven eight.
Five seven eight. Good job.
I read it there, and I looked at five seven eight.
You're looking at five seven eight, which is where it's gonna be, because it's gonna apply not just in this district, but elsewhere as well. Because you're gonna have it in all districts.
Should we not put in five seven eight, the fact that a bond is required?
Well, we can do that. I wasn't gonna do that at this point. I was gonna just.
If we agree that we should do it, I think we need to put it in.
Yeah. Yeah, or given the option of, the code enforcement officer can require a surety, and they leave it up to the code enforcement officer in the select and determine what those sureties should be, or leave it to the code enforcement officer what the surety is, or specify what the surety is right now, if you want to. But yes, you could say, we could play the, we'd say applicants, because you have to apply for these. Applicants, applicants shall post surety.
What is the reason, what is the reason for making it then or temporary, other than maintenance issues? Why, why are they automatically temporary?
Because that's the nature of a banner. Because they're pretty temporary. They get ripped up pretty quickly.
Well, I said, other than a maintenance issue. So if it's maintained, if you have, you know.
Well, right now, it doesn't.
Well, for instance, you could have a banner that's replaced on an annual basis, and, you know, you keep it. Oh, sure, for a year, they got the high-quality ripstop nylon.
Midas muffler is a big banner that are out for.
I'll give you a couple reasons. Number one, I would think that if you're gonna have a business and you want them to invest in a real sign, the objective is to ensure that we have some real signs going, but not banners as the sign. I think that's the first thing. Second thing, there's an assessing issue involved in that too. Beth will wanna be able to, if you're gonna have somebody to invest in signs, you want them to. Beth will wanna be able, if you're gonna have somebody to invest in the signs, you want them to invest in a decent sign, that shows they're managing the business. But we don't want, we want banners. Banners should be allowed, yes, and to, to, to advertise events, or advertise products, you know, their own special, or something like that. But, I mean, if somebody's gonna be putting up a sign, we'll put up a real sign in a reader board. That's fine.
Well, but what I'm thinking of is something completely different in terms of banners, and getting back to the creative aspect of it. I think some of these banners are very creative, very creatively done, some with, you know, sort of architectural elements to them, with various stretching mechanisms to make them appealing, so it would be almost like a very artistic sign.
Are you talking about a commercial banner, or are you talking about banners?
A commercial banner.
I've never seen a commercial banner that was artistic. But I'm willing to, I have an open mind on it. There, you know, there's, there's stock banners that, they put out for products, be it cigarettes, or.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not talking about the, you know, put two nails in the wall and roll it down. I'm talking about something that is, that, that would almost be a, a characteristic sign for that business, done in an artistic manner, but it would be made of fabrics. So in other words, the sign made of fabric, which is right now what you're defining as a banner.
If you're also with our signs, we don't keep, we don't prohibit fabric signs.
You don't? We're hearing half a fabric sign.
Yeah, we're getting materials.
Seven two five.
Commercial banner would be covered more of advertising what they're selling, rather than the business, right?
So, does anyone distinguish between a fabric sign and a commercial banner?
Well, first of all, a commercial banner is, well, let's look at the definition of a commercial banner.
Yeah. It's only gonna be there for thirty days, place a year.
Two years, two for dollars.
Something they're selling.
Something they're selling.
So if it's there all year, it's not a commercial banner.
A temporary sign advertising a commercial product or service conducted, uh, constructed from lightweight fabric and silicone material, which lasts for a minute.
So not actually advertising the business itself.
No, it's, it's a product or a service. It would be like.
Event sale or annual.
Well, what is saying, another, it could be an event, too.
Another reason that we would be not regulating it this way as opposed to the others, is because we're excluding it from the sign, um, requirements. Right, okay. So it's, it's outside of the sign requirements, right?
Okay, I got a question. Events, okay, we'll use Vettly as a perfect example. Okay, he has banners, okay, for different events that are going on throughout the entire summer, different rides, or different other things going on.
Okay.
He can, and it's not up for thirty days or anything else. Maybe change different, different banner every two weeks, because it's a different event, or something else trying to give.
That's item number four, if I might answer you. Community festivals, carnivals, and special events, any sign directed by a business, charitable organization, or public organization directly associated with a public festival or carnival, special community event approved by the board is what.
May not be a community. When it's not for a run though itself, to say if he's doing a ride, it's a charitable event.
If it's a charitable event, fine. If that, like, having a pig roast, no. But if it's, and you could do that, sure, but you only get two of those a year. Yeah. But if you're doing it, if you're doing it for a ride, and it's a charitable thing, the selectmen say, "Yeah, that's a charitable thing," then fine, yeah. It's outside, and that's a new sign.
You mean, he has, can he get a permit every time he puts it, change it up?
He has to now.
He has to now.
That's not a change.
Yeah. So now, right now, it's not even allowed. I mean, it's allowed, but you have to get a permit from the select.
I have a question about the size of, of the banner. I think, I think we're all talking about, I think, fifteen-foot ones, right? What about something that you just hook up, Joe mentioned, you just hook up, and it's, you know, that big?
Yep.
Thirty percent off, um, that, that's a banner, too. So.
Put it on a sandwich board.
Well, put it in your window. That's why we need to make that distinction in the window, because we know we might, we might get a supermarket, and they wanna put up, you know, "Hans, three ninety-five" in the window. Terrific, go ahead.
Long as it's not in addition to their maximum gift already.
The banners are usually, remember, the banners are usually temporary, they're usually hung on the outside of buildings. And, or between gas pumps. Very honestly, that's where I see a lot of them, hanging from the building, between a gas pump to the building, I've seen those. And that's, where they hang it off their sign.
So if it was inside, so Hanson has something inside, they would need a permit?
No, no, inside signs are exempt. That's why I gave you five seven, you go down that list of exemptions, you see inside signs are exempt. If they're in the window, they gotta be through you. And, you know, actually, the irony is that right now, all the supermarkets have moved completely away from putting the big banners in the windows. If you notice, you go to Hannaford's, you go to Shaw, they just don't have any. Because they advertise, they advertise more effectively via the internet, via circulars.
They burn it.
Yep, they just don't put those, because people don't.
They're going there anyways.
Yeah, I mean, that's how they're, that's how they're advertising. Walmart doesn't have anything on the outside there either. It's just, we move beyond that technology, and it's old technology.
Okay, great.
I have no problem with, with the definition of, of commercial banners, or the way it looks. My only comment on this would be, uh, the maximum area. We're allowing a single occupancy, twenty square feet, multiple occupancies, or ten square, square foot per occupant. I think they should be the same, I think they should both be twenty.
Right, you should have all those people.
Where do you see that?
In the table. Oh, it's in the table, it's a very long.
It's in the table.
Commercial banners.
You know, think of it this way, most banners are usually about, you know, uh, three feet. Most of the ones, you get a beer one, you get a Pepsi one, or your Pepsi one. They're usually pretty long banners, and they're usually only two, three feet wide, three at the most.
But if it's, if it's three feet wide, then in a single, in a multiple occupancy, it's three by three squared, that's it. It's ten square feet. And, and that's why I'm thinking that if, if it's in a single business, you could have it seven by three, and it would be allowed. So I think you should do the same thing for multiple occupancy.
I agree, and I think the part of controlling, uh, factor would be that the owner of the building would probably not be had three different tenants, they all want to, you might say, you know, it's probably.
I don't know, too many would, that would really regulate that.
Yeah, and, and I'm not sure they would, and since we're only saying you can have them twice for thirty days.
Yeah. Well, you wanna make them all ten feet?
No, I wanna make them all twenty.
Twenty's a big banner.
We're doing that in the same occupancy? It's, it's just over six by three? There's no question. There's, there's absolutely, it is a big banner.
Five feet by four feet is always twenty. I mean, uh, if you wanna be seen, if you wanna be seen.
Remember, it's a banner, it's not a sign, it's a banner.
It's a banner, and it's temporary.
It's temporary, it's in addition to. Remember, these are in addition to existing signs. It's not like we're taking anything away, we're actually giving something that right now, you really can't do.
So I'm, I'm just gonna make it a motion that we make it a twenty square foot per occupancy for the maximum area for both, uh, single occupancy and multiple occupancy.
Do I have a motion? Do I have a second? Okay, we have John's second.
I want to discuss it.
Any, any further discussion?
So you're saying twenty square feet?
I think twenty square feet is, I think if it's acceptable for the single occupant building, it should be acceptable for the multiple occupant building.
The reason why we suggested, if I mean, Mr. Chairman, if, the reason why we suggested twenty, uh, ten for multiple occupancies, where it was.
That's fine, a lot. If I had a button, we'd be here in the.
We're gonna stop the board, then we turn half to the quarter, turn half to the eight.